Our citizen self-service software, which is really online access to permitting for contractors, the general public, anybody that pulls building permits and planning actions, lower order planning actions. So this is a software that allow people to pull permits for electrical, plumbing, mechanical, as well as additions, decks, things that are, that require new dwellings or commercials still have to be submitted outside of that online format. Another update is that we were notified on February 12th, yesterday, that the City of Ashland was awarded a DLCD, Every Mile Counts Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Grant, which will then provide consultant services for looking at the code update requirements for our climate-friendly areas. So 3G consultants will be doing that work. The other aspect that we requested and received a grant for was that Echo Northwest do a market analysis for the housing development potential in those climate-friendly areas to ensure what's ultimately zoned is something that's achievable. And as a minor update, but one that the City of Ashland as a whole can be proud of, we were also notified that we, for the 37th consecutive year, are a Tree City USA. So, those are them.
Thirty-seven years?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
So every year, the city provides an application and demonstrates what's done. Categories such as having a standing tree management advisory committee, our code requirements for tree preservation and protection and tree planting and the work of the Parks Department all go into the application to demonstrate that we're rightfully a Tree City USA.
Well, congratulations.
Do we notice anybody else who has such a record?
I'm not sure. It's gotta be up there.
I think there's a handful of cities in Oregon that have more.
Okay.
More?
I like everybody who fries.
Oh.
We get a flag.
I don't know if that's true. I'm just being facetious. It's not even.
Okay. Okay, well, those are good announcements, so we've got things to do for the rest of the year. And does anybody, anybody want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with minutes for January 9th and January 23rd?
Yes, I'm moved.
Is there a second?
And I will second that, having read them completely.
Excellent. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passed? Okay. Public forum. Well, I see a lack of people in the audience, so I'm thinking nobody's gonna come talk to us tonight. So we'll move on to other business, which is a review of the community development work plan. We have lots of things on this list, so Derek, you wanna take it away?
I will say, as Derek gets started, our, because although this is a regular meeting of the commission, it's really functioning in part as a study session. So as you have questions or comments, as we move through these items, it would be good to take those along the way and help us recognize what your expectations are for each of the items as we go through.
And before he starts, let me recognize Paula Hyatt on the Zoom screen. Hi, Paula.
Hey, I hope everyone's doing well tonight. Sorry I couldn't be there in person.
So as Chair Werner mentioned, we're looking at the community development department work plan for the coming year. We just wanted to give you an update on projects, upcoming annexations, commission and committee activities, and study session topics as they relate to the four divisions in community In terms of upcoming projects, and I wasn't gonna go into these in a lot of detail, but I think Brandon and I can kinda go back and forth on them with key points. Parks and open space trails plan, map adoption, you've already seen, it's going to the council in February for a public hearing, and then should be adopted and complete early March. The department is also working on a development process management advisory committee, which Carrie is serving as a commission liaison for, and we've got a mix of the development community serving on that commission and staff from planning and building. And the hope is that by July, they'll come forth with a series of recommendations to streamline the land use process in areas where that's possible, and also look at departmental procedures and where things could be, could potentially be streamlined in terms of permitting. And that commission so far has looked at a survey of customers over the last four years and taken feedback, and we've got that in comparison to previous years with similar questions. They've also looked at a study of permit fees across a number of cities in Oregon for comparison, and we're now working on a list of recommendations with, again, the expectation to be done and ready to present to council in July. We are also looking at an accessory residential unit incentive program, which we're hoping to implement in-house. This is just an example of plans the City of Medford is using, where an applicant can acquire free plans for expedited review. The city essentially would already have reviewed them and determined that they can be approved in terms of code, so the applicant would need to demonstrate how they fit onsite, and instead of a few weeks' review, it may be substantially quicker than that.
Plans are free?
That's the intent, yeah. So in City of Medford, those plans that you see are provided, I think, by Pacific Wall that has provided them, and the plans are free. Often, property owners will want to customize those plans, and so they would have to reach out to the architect or designer to have those customizations done, and that would not likely be free.
Is, is the one on the left, is that, obviously it's two-story, but is, is the, are the sliding glass doors, they open just to the second floor, or?
Yeah, my understanding is that schematic is a ground floor, a garage, which we're not seeing the garage door in this image, but I will say that these are plans that are available in City of Medford currently. We are reaching out to the designer that designed these to see if they could be utilized as permit-ready plans in Ashland, but we're also looking to other architects or designers that have developed projects within Ashland over the last few years that have plans that went through our building permitting process to see if they would be interested in engaging in this way.
Good. Go ahead.
Would these have pre-approved engineering plans already?
Yeah, the intent is that the plans would have, you know, obviously, an architect's stamp, or the building department would fully review them and determine that the plan meets all building codes, and as such, the review process would be expediated. There would be, if there's modifications or changes, that would necessitate a new review. If they were, for instance, located on steep slopes, that may need engineering that wasn't provided as part of the canned plans. So, you know, I think in general, for somebody's rear, rear property on a flat lot that meets setbacks, it's an opportunity to have something that is ready and able to be located without added professional services.
I think that's a good idea.
Streamline.
Yeah, we're actually looking for a variety of plan types also. I'd note, one being, you know, ADA accessible, one being, being energy-conserving or using sustainable materials, another being small, five hundred square feet or less, and another one being micro, of three hundred square feet or less. So that's kind of the wish list of what we'd like to incorporate into a public-facing website that had those options that could be selected.
Sounds great.
What's the timeline like for this?
Our objective is to, if we can get the plans ready, our city's website is supposed to be revamped in the month of April, and so we would be looking at if we can get plans in place, actually launching as early as May or June.
And as, as we go through this, if you have any thoughts on priority of these projects other than those that are obviously guided by state deadlines, or if there are any that you are interested in helping to shepherd through the public engagement process and bring explanations of that public process to the commission when the item comes before the commission, and then take commission recommendations to council, feel free to speak up if you'd like to be that sort of commission liaison to the project. We've also received a grant for an economic opportunities analysis, which we're including in that, an in-house update of the buildable lands inventory. Right now, we're preparing the request for proposals on that, and we're trying to coordinate with the City of Medford, since they're also doing an EOA at the same time, and there's a number of regional issues related to employment projections that we hope we can gain some efficiencies by having either the same consultant or consultants who know and can work together on, on those regional issues. And as Brandon mentioned at the start, climate-friendly and equitable communities, the next step in that process is we have to identify climate-friendly areas. Last year, we did the study and identified three primary potential climate-friendly areas, and then the downtown as a fourth, really a secondary area that may not have all of the CFA changes made to the code, because we are largely built out and want to preserve existing historic buildings, but which would still have some ability to address those CFA requirements. We did receive a technical assistance grant award that was announced yesterday. We're also working with the state on that project as a model community for the transportation modeling, which in the broader climate-friendly and equitable communities, rulemaking, I don't believe is required until 2027. So we're one of two cities in Oregon that will be having the transportation modeling done sort of concurrently with the CFA designation, and we've had a number of meetings with that consultant and should have, I think, an initial run of that model done or done shortly. And under the climate-friendly rules, we're required to have CFA designations made and the codes and maps amended by December 31st of this year. The grant award actually extends through mid-2025, so there's some potential for a little breathing room there, but we still need to talk to the state if that was, was intentional or not. Another thing we haven't talked that much about, at least at meetings I've been to, is a manufactured dwelling park zoning ordinance amendment that would essentially be putting specific zoning on those parks to preserve them as existing affordable housing. Believe we've been wait-listed on a technical assistance grant for that one?
Yeah, we have. So we did apply for a technical assistance grant and were advised by the Department of Land Conservation and Development that they had more applications than they had funding available for that housing-related program. However, they felt that the project was one that could be supported through a grant, and so advised that they would be looking at the current legislative session for additional funding. However, I think that we are gonna be in a position to begin some of the initial steps of drafting that ordinance and with or without technical assistance grant. We identified it as one of two projects to be completed in our housing production strategy, and as such, don't have the luxury of waiting for a potential grant to move forward with it.
So is the goal of that, that, so it's to maintain the existing?
Yeah.
And so that's keeping them from being developed into something fancier?
Right. Currently, we have a number of manufactured home parks in Ashland that are located on multifamily zone property, one on commercial property, another that is actually outside our city limits within the Croman Mill designation. So the question posed of the Housing and Human Services Commission and this body and then council was from property or residents of some of the manufactured home parks advocating that they were concerned that a conversion of use could displace them.
Right.
And so establishing a manufactured home park zone does commit that those properties that are within that designated zone, wherever that may end up, remain manufactured home parks.
How much pushback do you think you would get from those landowners?
That would be step one, is talking to landowners. The City of Portland implemented a manufactured home park zone, and we did speak to the planner that worked on that, identified that there were 54 manufactured home parks in Portland. When they began the ordinance, they reached out to each and every one. Fifty-three of the 54 were amenable to having their park be in a zone. There were some carrots added in terms of density to address potential takings concerns. And I know that Councilor Hyatt was integral in having that initial meeting and may recall as well, but my understanding is that 54th manufactured home park did not end up being manufactured home park zone. So in lieu of going through and compelling that, they just went with those that were voluntarily willing.
Wasn't there a state bill that recently protected mobile home parks from being redeveloped, or am I just imagining that?
If there is, I'd love to know that House bill or state bill. I'm not familiar with it. I know that the state has supported the retention of manufactured home parks through funding for cooperative models where the residents purchase the park, which is a great way to secure that concern over being displaced, because then it's owned by the park residents. I would say that the manufactured home park zone does not have any impact on the price of renting a slot within a manufactured home park, and so there could still be market pressures that drive up the housing costs for those residents.
Not being familiar with the process, when you're talking about getting a grant for technical assistance, what is the technical assistance we're seeking?
So the technical assistance could be, it would be public engagement and outreach, setting up community events, doing door-to-door mailing or mailings in order to encourage people to come, but probably more importantly, researching manufactured home park zones that have been implemented elsewhere, reviewing our land use code, and providing recommendations for staff and the planning commission, and ultimately council, as to what code provisions should be incorporated in an ordinance. There is no model manufactured home park ordinance available. You know, City of Portland, and I'm forgetting the other city, one other city in Oregon also had manufactured home parks though, but there really isn't a lot of examples that we could look at.
Yeah, I assume that it had to do, certainly very importantly, with how this would be worded, and that would be the technical assistance among other things, because it strikes me as interesting that, and I understand the reason for it, but it does strike me as interesting, protecting a certain class of homeownership, and then the class that's right above it, does it then seek similar protection as far as type of housing or economic region of the city or something like that? There's some questions to be asked.
Justin, it, you could just look at it like a single-family residential zone, it's just keeping a certain kind of land use intact, and I don't think it impacts the...
Well, the only thing that, I mean, it's just popping in my brain right now, but it's, it has very much to do with the economic strata of the housing.
Yes, but so do all zones in a way.
Not really. Single-family residents has nothing to do with it.
R3, you know, R2, they all have, I don't mean to say it like that, but they all have associative, potentially associative economic class, and, well, and the intention of the zooing it is to maintain a comfortable housing, so, yes.
Yeah, I, I get it.
Yeah, there, one, another example where land use was introduced in Ashland to protect a particular housing type. We did, two things come to mind. One, our R3 and R2 zones, we established a minimum density for development to ensure that those multifamily zones would not develop out of single-family detached housing. Another example would be through the passage of a condominium conversion ordinance that was done probably around 2009, I could be wrong on the date, but the concern at that point was, it must have been before the recession, so maybe 2006, we were seeing a lot of apartments convert to condominiums and resulting displacement of the apartment use and rental occupancy. So the city concerned about that loss of that type of housing, multifamily apartments, passed a condominium conversion ordinance that stipulated that in the event that the property's conversion required a relief for any non-conformities, meaning that it didn't meet all current building code, or planning code, rather, that they would have to retain a percentage of market-rate rentals within the condominium or affordable ownership housing within the condominium product. So again, it is a bit of a shift of, here's the zone, build within it. It was intended specifically to maintain a particular type of needed housing within the community, and I think that's where the manufactured home park zone is intended to preserve that type of needed housing.
Yeah, very much. I mean, I think I saw a number just the other day that the typical site payment right now is somewhere above $800.
Yeah, I've heard that anecdotally.
So Brandon and I have also been talking to Southern Oregon University about an update to their master plan. As you may be aware, state law requires that they adopt a master plan in conjunction with the city every 10 years, and we're right now about four years overdue. So they have a few projects that they're looking at, including, I think, one you may have seen in the newspaper, dealing with senior housing on campus that would be incorporated with the educational program in terms of nursing and, and administration of that facility. So that's something that's likely coming forward to you. We've also asked them in that, what they're envisioning as a light update of the master plan, really, to enable those projects, to also look at things that have changed since the 2010 master plan was adopted, and incorporate those changes into the master plan, so we're not having to go back and, and address conditional uses on things that we can update now knowing what they're going to be. And one piece that, where that particularly comes into play is the corner of Ashland Street and Walker Avenue. That location in the master plan was for JPR's radio facility, which was incorporated into the theater building. So that lot now is sort of unidentified in the master plan, so we've asked that that be looked at. And then they're also looking at disposing of some unused properties around the campus. Quite a few of those are residential, and if someone were coming in to do redevelopment of those properties now, because they're identified in the master plan as needing to serve the educational functions of the university, a residentially zoned property owned by someone that isn't part of the university would still need either a zone change or conditional use permit. So we're trying to get those, those pieces done, and this will obviously be coming back for at least, probably a couple of study sessions with you before we get to the point of adoption, but definitely wanted to see coming. You're also all aware of the Croman Mill Site and Railroad Property Environmental Cleanups, those are ongoing, and we'll have an update on the Croman cleanup a little bit later here. And then in terms of the Croman site redevelopment, there was an update at council last week as well, and a newspaper article. If that, I think, continues to move forward at an increasingly brisk pace as the cleanup seems more and more possible. And then finally, what's called a playwright walk that Brandon may want to talk more about, but essentially, local philanthropists and organizations are working with the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee and the Public Arts Committee to develop a playwright walk that would feature medallions or plaques in the sidewalk around the downtown, kind of pointing to either local or, or more worldly playwrights with sort of a connection to, to OSF, and trying to bring a kind of a tourist attraction around that to the broader downtown.
Is that envisioned as sort of a self-guided walk kind of thing?
Yeah, I think at this point, it's, it's initiation stage. The group convened, included the Chamber of Commerce, the City of Ashland, OSF, and reached out to SOU, and they'll be participating as well, each doing different aspects. The city, city's role in it, one, because the right-of-way is within the public area, would be to essentially grant authority for use of public property for the locating of the medallions in the sidewalk. The Chamber of Commerce in looking at the potential locations within areas in which that could be located. The city would also be looking at mapping those areas to do a self-guided map for people to move from one to another. SOU has been looked at to provide some of the graphic design work through their arts department and their theater department, some of the quotations, and OSF is keen on looking at the playwrights and quotations with the intention that the quotations are those that are uplifting of the human spirit, I think was the objective. And so this is modeled after a Iowa City, I believe, which has famous authors all located and medallions around the city where you could go, and I have over 100 installed at this point. This is expected to start relatively small, but set a framework by which other ones could be added over time without a lot of further public process, because this is a private-initiated event or project, really just identifying where they would be located, and then as they come forward, as sidewalk projects are done, be an opportune time to insert one. So, yeah. The details aren't all worked out yet, but the concept is pretty well fleshed out with the group.
So, let me, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it sounds something along the lines of the historical medallions that have been set into the sidewalk areas?
Yeah, and Derek's showing photos of those right now, so.
Yeah.
So those five medallions were a project called MAP, Marking Ashland Places, and they are directly related to historic, historically relevant events or buildings within the city and are located accordingly. So there is an expectation of doing a MAP 2 project. These were all in the railroad district. There are three other historic districts, the next downtown, Skidmore, and Hargadine, being the other historic districts that would have a similar project. So I would say that the playwright walk is separate and independent, but this is probably a good local example of what it might look like. Looking at the Iowa City examples, the medallions are not all uniform, they're, I'd say, more creative in terms of a lot of variation from medallion to medallion, so to correlate with the literature that they're representing, so.
Interesting.
It is, yeah.
And since I have the slide up, yeah, these are the markers for the Marking Ashland Places first phase project in the railroad district. There are five medallions you see here, and they're sort of spaced along A Street, and then at the entrance to the railroad park. You have the medallion, and then a hub sculpture that's sort of the centerpiece of that railroad district grouping. The sculpture is called Golden Connections, and really, this project speaks to, I think, a developing partnership between the Public Arts Commission and the Historic Commission, and that's continuing to develop with the second phase of the MAP project. There's also a number of mural projects that are being considered and looked at, and some crosswalk paintings and other items that are gonna be coming forward in the hopefully near future. And then...
I had a conversation with the Arts Commission on those plaques. Surprisingly expensive, but really well done.
Yeah. Well, and I think one of the most expensive parts of it was the ADA sidewalk improvements that had to be done in the railroad park in order to do that sidewalk modification.
Yeah, okay.
And it, because it happened during COVID, and at a time when we had lost a bunch of our project managers in engineering, I think we had about a two-year delay added in there as well. So in addition to the projects listed, we do have three annexations that we're expecting probably within the first half of this year, so those could begin coming in at any time. For the Croman Mill Site, which we're all expecting a new park on East Main Street... a new park on East Main Street that replaces the property that was previously identified as park where Phase 2 of the Snowberry Affordable Development is. And then the Grand Terrace Project, Mr. Kendrick has indicated to us he's looking at coming back for a third iteration of that here probably between April and June.
Okay.
So we'll be seeing that again. And then just to give you an idea of commission and committee support within the department in addition to Planning Commission and Council, we do staff the Historic Preservation Committee and Public Arts. And I already showed you the Markers Project. Public Arts and Historic are planning to partner for an unveiling of that, the MAP project first phase. So we'll have an unveiling, probably the latter part of May, in the railroad park with the Chamber of Commerce, Historic and Public Arts to unveil that and then have some walking tours that coincide with other Preservation Week activities by the Historic Commission. Housing and Human Services Commission is staffed by the department as well as their new Homeless Services Master Plan Subcommittee that I'll talk about a bit later. And then we still have the Tree Management Advisory Committee that's responsible for our Tree City of the Year designation, the Development Process Management Advisory Committee that we mentioned, and a Building Appeals Board and Demolition Review Committee that still resides under the building official. And again, that's the Marker Project. And then in terms of upcoming study sessions for the next year, in addition to looking at all of those projects, we'll be looking at bringing forward a discussion of expirations, vesting, and modification of land use approvals that was requested. And we've talked about 822 Oak Street, a discussion of unbundled parking, which came up during the adoption of the parking rules late last year. And then I believe some of you or all of you received an email reiterating the need to look at that. So it's on the radar screen for a study session. And I will say that I'm sitting on a task force with the state to develop a parking guide with a number of other cities and state representatives. And the idea would be to give cities a guidebook on how to deal with various issues around parking management, paid parking, permit parking programs, those sorts of things. And I have discussed with that group and asked that some discussion of unbundling be included. So hopefully, some of the work that we would otherwise have to do as part of a study session and looking at whatever that leads to can be done for us. And we also talked last time about looking at the comprehensive plan, a chapter at a time. So we have that on the list. And I think the idea we had gotten to was probably looking first at the transportation element. If you all have any preferences for the order of the rest of those, let us know. You don't have to do it now, but if you do have any that stand out at you.
And I will note that the reason that the transportation element by staff was highlighted as to be done in the near future is because also in 2024, the Transportation Advisory Committee and Public Works is looking at updating the transportation system plan. And that is a part of the comprehensive plan and so would be coming back to this body for adoption. So review of the transportation element would be timely so that you're familiar with the policies and goals set forth for evaluation of the transportation system plan and how it addresses those.
Yeah, we should start with that.
Yeah, I've been digging through the housing element, Chapter 6, and getting familiar with that and the comprehensive plan.
The housing elements? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was updated in 2019. So it's probably the most current of those.
I'm looking at it as much for just self-education as anything else. And then just the feeling that I have that I want to flesh out a vision of what I personally on the Planning Commission want to see for the city and then have that discussion within this body as we go along.
And that is my favorite element, so I'm glad that you're starting with that.
Can't be, you're starting with transportation.
Well, some members of this body were actually probably, just Lisa, were on the body when that came forward previously. Is that true? Or Carrie? And you weren't on? Okay.
Good thing, on transportation?
On the housing element. Really?
Oh, I remember when you were doing that, yes.
Of course.
And then also looking at, we'll be asking at some point soon for your availability for an upcoming Planning Commission retreat and looking for any suggestions you might have of topics. And we'll also be planning site visits, which I suspect will include the midtown urban lofts. If you haven't been by Iowa and Garfield, they are coming along. That'll be 70 units of rental housing being built very quickly and probably going to have the model building available for walkthroughs in April. And Beach Creek subdivision, the second phase of that is building out quickly. And we expect a third point, third phase plat to finish out that subdivision anytime soon. And then just the last two points from building and housing. Building Division is working on some updates to the codes in Chapter 15, dealing with both requirements from the state for building codes and requirements from FEMA and DLCD regarding floodplain code updates. And so you'll likely be seeing those, if there's anything in there to make recommendations on when we get to the ordinance adoption process. And then the Homeless Services Master Plan Subcommittee of the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee that I mentioned is working to look at the camping ordinance, revisiting severe weather shelter thresholds. I think council made a decision on that last week. Planning for the long-term use of 2200 Ashland Street. And then looking at strategies for implementing and managing a master plan. And that work is all supposed to be completed by July as well. So busy first half of this year. And that's all I got unless you all have any questions, preferences, desires to jump in as liaisons.
Can you put back the list of the very first thing you showed us?
The first thing?
Yeah, the list of...
Projects, there you go.
So is anybody interested in jumping in on one of those? One or maybe more?
Oh, what kind of... Before I jump, what kind of support are you looking for from planning commissioners on any of those?
Yeah, so I'm sure it would differ from action to action, but I'll just use, for instance, your support on the Development Process Management Advisory Committee works both as a representative on that group and then provides an opportunity to be a liaison back to this group as to what they're working on.
Okay.
In terms of the Economic Opportunities Analysis, that is largely a project that would be looking at the existing land inventory. That's why we're doing a buildable lands inventory. So we don't really need commissioner support in terms of the GIS work. But when we actually start drafting a Economic Opportunities Analysis with the consultant, it would be useful to have a commission member be essentially part of a technical advisory group to review the work product of the consultant before we come to the full commission at either study session or public hearing. And additionally, I think the climate-friendly manufactured home park, SOU master plan, all fall into that same category. You know, I do think that the Croman, the DEQ cleanups probably not necessary in that regard. And the Croman Site redevelopment proposal, again, the applicant is preparing to submit an application. And once they submit, it would actually not be appropriate for a commissioner to talk with the applicant outside of public hearings. But that's essentially what we were thinking when discussing the potential of folding commissioner staff into the technical side of the work that we do.
Thanks.
And climate-friendly and manufactured housing park will probably have some public outreach upfront with stakeholder, landowner, property owner outreach meetings. That would be a blast to attend.
Yeah, we're looking at it, I mean, Chair Verner, I would be interested in tossing my head in on the economic opportunities piece. And the work is done there. Just flesh out exactly, you know, what the role is going to be and I will lend assistance as best I can.
Great, excellent. That's a good fit, I think.
I think it's a good match.
Yeah. Anybody else interested?
I'm gonna have to ponder and then I'll come back with it.
Yeah, you don't have to leap in tonight. But if there is something that does pique your interest, then by all means, say something.
And these also will be coming back before you in some capacities, namely the climate-friendly equitable communities work and the manufactured home park ordinance, both of which would have that public involvement component. And this body, you have a dual role, both as planning commission. But in our municipal code, you're also the designated committee for citizen involvement. So your role in that capacity will be to review public involvement plans that are provided through consultants and staff to see if those need be amended before moving forward with the projects.
Has that always been the case?
It was, not always, but probably the last four years.
So have we reviewed a public involvement piece in the last four years?
I would have to go back and look at what amendments...
I just wonder what kicks it in, because I know there's been plenty of public involvement that's occurred.
Yeah, again, it would be public involvement related to an ordinance change. The, you know, not necessarily all public involvement that we do, but...
So you're talking about things like, not, not, on one side, we'd be, on one side of a public hearing, but then if they had a community open house kind of thing, planning that?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be planning that. It would be looking at the proposed public outreach plan and approving of that before it's implemented. So that wouldn't necessarily mean attending the public open house, but confirming on that scope of work that a public open house was appropriate or if it was missing, suggesting that one be added.
And that's in the commissioner's, a commissioner's role as liaison?
No, that is your, the full body's role as the CCI, the Committee for Citizen Involvement. So it is a dual role. Yeah.
So, another question, please. Lots of pieces, lots of moving parts in, you know, many of these projects here, and they bounce off of each other. So I was, as we're going through this, I was thinking to myself, particularly like CFEC and some of the other stuff, how is this in community development or here in the Planning Commission bounced off something like the housing production strategy, which kind of sits over the top of an awful lot of this as to what we think we need to do in order to get us to the place that we think we want to be? These don't just preside in a vacuum. That has to be brought in to have the conversation too as are we meeting our goals in this strata of housing production? And how are we doing it? And what are the steps being taken? Which also might touch on climate friendly, which is, you know, a few other combination of things.
Right.
The coordination of that effort, or at least that conversation, I see as being a great help from your department to help us stay on top of the parts as they're bouncing off of each other, as I call it. But ultimately, we end up having to take a look at that too on this commission to see that we're fulfilling our duty in all of the areas that are related to the topic that we have in front of us. And so that needs to come up as we're, you know, having these conversations and these things are brought forward, that this decision is going to have this impact over here, this impact over here, no impact here, that type of conversation. When I was looking at comprehensive plan, when I was going through six there, I was paying attention to the Housing Production Strategy numbers that I saw that were brought forward, that were saying where we were going to, in order to account for future growth, what we would have to build in order to do that.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. And doing the housing needs analysis, which followed the housing element, we did an analysis of how much and what types of housing would be needed to accommodate a 20-year growth. And if you took the existing pattern of historic developments and just projected that forward, the inequities of housing production from the past would continue to go forward. You'd still have a dominance of single-family detached housing. And yet, our housing needs analysis showed we need more multifamily rental housing and two-bedroom units, for instance. So in order to correct for that, you almost have to increase the, not almost, you do need to increase the amount of multifamily to offset the historic deficit. And so that's what the housing production strategy was then built on. How do you produce those type of units?
And yet, some of those numbers came forward though, showing just across the board for income stratas, number of houses at the 120% level as well as the number of houses down at the, you know...
Right. Yeah, you do need housing across the continuum.
And I question that. Are we not oversubscribed at the upper part of that economic continuum? And we're paying more attention to the lower part in order to backfill some things that have been ignored or couldn't be afforded? That's part of the conversation that has to be, to be had, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think that was at the heart of the conversation for development of the housing production strategy and identifying the 15 different strategies within that document. And they will have overlay with the climate-friendly equitable communities area, for instance, or the Croman Mill. The property developer, prospective developer has talked to the city council about a tax increment financing potential. The housing production strategy identifies urban renewal as one strategy to address affordable housing. It doesn't address it in the coming year or the next year, but many years down the road, because we can only do so many strategies per year. But again, that is an element that crosses over. And likewise, the development and climate-friendly areas, were it zoned in such a way as to only accommodate single-family detached housing, that would not be in compliance with the housing production strategy. But I agree that people could disagree on whether we're taking the appropriate strategies. But those are the strategies that was identified and approved by council.
Thank you. I get it. Yeah, it's just a matter of which ones are we attacking first and what segments are we going after initially? Because you can't boil the ocean, you know? We have to do a few things at a time.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this scope of work is rather ambitious for the next two years, to say the least. Typically, our department has been able to do one or two long-range planning projects per year. So looking at this list, it's a bit daunting. At the same time, we have seen a decrease in current planning and current building activity. So if there ever was a time to take on more long range, that was probably it.
It corresponds, you guys getting busy, it'll all pick up again.
Yeah.
Of course.
Well, we'll adjust at that time.
I'd like to see building pick up.
I think that's really all I have, if you all don't have anything else.
Okay, anybody else have any potential comments?
Just some feedback on priority. So my recommendations or the priorities that resonate with me would be obviously the work that's already being done on parks, the first one. I like the development process management piece because you're talking about improving and creating efficiencies for your customer base. I think that's important. I think the ARU idea is great. So I think that should continue to be a priority. CFEC is, I think, is an important piece. I think the SOU light update is important, as is Croman Mill. So those would be the things that resonate with me.
Any of those individually that you want to be the... Any others individually that you wanna be the liaison with?
I'll get back to you on that. Possibly the ARU, but I'm not sure if there's help needed there. See, that may be just a plug and play, you know, if there's, I don't know if you need, that you need help.
You know, I think that before launching a program, it's always good to have other eyes take a look at it and see it from a different perspective, so.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, that's, I think that's a great initiative, and I would be happy to help with that.
Our, I know you already answered this, and I apologize if I'm being redundant, but is there, are, are manufactured home parks under any threat right now?
Not that I'm aware of, there's, but I don't know that it would come across my desk if there are private party negotiations for acquisition. You know, typically manufactured home parks are a valuable asset for the property owner, so. We don't see a lot of creation of new manufactured home parks in Oregon. I think we had one last year, which was the first in decades, so. But closures of manufactured home parks can have a very detrimental effect on the properties owners within, homeowners within that area. So that's, you know, a valid concern that they have. But I've not heard of any movement for closure or redevelopment or any pre-apps or anything like that.
Okay, so I think we have our work cut out for, for minutes here?
Plus.
Plus? Shall we move on? Okay, Derek. Croman Mill.
Yeah, so I can touch on Croman Mill. Essentially, we went to the city council at their last meeting to provide an update both on the redevelopment plan and the cleanup. Specifically, I know that this commission is concerned with the cleanup, because that's a prerequisite step for the future development of the site. So as of November 15th, I think it was November 20th, Department of Environmental Quality issued a authorization for waste removal for the contaminated soil that's identified in three areas, two Wigwam burners and the wood treatment area. Of those, we received notice just at the end of last week that the cleanup of the Wigwam burners area is now scheduled for this coming Saturday and the Saturday subsequent, so the 17th and the 24th.
That means they found a site willing to take.
Yeah, so that, those areas, the site in which they could relocate them to has long been identified. The Grib, Greb Pit in.
Eagle Point.
Eagle Point. So that material will be relocated to that site. They estimate probably 20 cubic yards, or 20 trucks, so not cubic yards, sorry, 20 trucks per day for that removal process. The SES engineering, which is the environmental consultant, that is working with Croman Mill and DEQ will be onsite during that excavation, both to identify the area to be excavated and then do immediate sampling of the area to determine whether additional material needs to be removed. The third site, the wood treatment area, which is the portion that has a higher level of contaminants, is the portion that they would not be able to relocate to the Eagle Point site, but would have to locate it to a landfill. In speaking with DEQ, it's not considered hazardous material and subject to those kind of requirements, but as contaminated material, the receiving disposal site has to agree to take that material. And obviously, that is a discussion point between the property owner paying for that disposal and the disposal site. So we've not yet heard that they've scheduled or identified the site in which they would relocate that to, but they are moving forward with that.
If it's not hazardous, why does it need to be removed?
Well, it's still contaminated. So the, I, my understanding is talking to DEQ, they indicated that the hazardous designation would not make it suitable for a solid waste removal and disposal at a, like Dry Creek landfill. The hazardous is what you have for asbestos that has to be wrapped, has special, you know, hazardous waste requirements that does not apply to the material that is on the Croman site.
Croman site is not asbestos?
No, it is a dioxins, which are a contaminant that need be removed in order to allow for the future redevelopment of the site. But they were initially looking at the concentration to determine whether it was a hazardous to the degree that it would have to be incinerated at a facility in Utah, or wrapped and taken to a facility up at the border of Washington, but determined that the concentration fell into the contaminated solid waste category and as such could be disposed of at a landfill, so.
You can just go to Eagle Point instead of Cross State?
Yeah, the transportation costs and the incineration costs for removing 600 cubic yards to be incinerated in Utah, as you can imagine, would be quite high. So this determination on November 20th from DEQ does streamline the cleanup process. Again, they have to do further sampling after they've removed this material. And oftentimes, just so that it's clear, it's, it's rare that it is a one-and-done scenario in talking to DEQ's representative. Oftentimes, at sampling, it triggers a second, this is called the interim remediation plan, really the initial. And then if they find more contaminants, they will have to go another round. But hopefully, they'll get it all in one shot, but it's unlikely.
Since they're testing immediately, does that mean the whole thing is gonna be complete, like within a month or something?
No, I will, no, at this point, they're only, for the next two weeks, only looking at removing the two Wigwam burners. They've not yet have a site for the wood treatment center, and as such, they're not going to be excavating that area this weekend or next.
Okay. But, okay, but theoretically, then they will be testing immediately after removal. So the whole, the, once it starts, the process could take, could take a limited duration?
Provided all the testing comes back clean.
Okay, well, obviously, even if it didn't, they could just go back in and take out more bright sand?
Yeah, no, I don't think they, I don't think the samples are available immediately.
That quickly?
Yeah, I think they get sent to a lab and evaluated.
Sometimes you have to monitor, and there's a monitoring program that can take years depending. So monitoring water, you know, so.
Yeah, one of the samplings that they'll do isn't just at the margins of the excavation, but the perimeter of the property to see if there is subsurface migration of material.
They'll do like monitoring wells and then periodically test those and help them come back clean, or in accordance with their plan.
Yeah, I was just, I was just hoping that the whole cleanup thing could be done in a year and then we can move on to.
Yeah, I, I think that's a hope that is shared by many. And I think that the property owner also is hoping that the excavation of the identified sites will come back as having completed the process. And then getting a finding of no further action from DEQ would be the ideal. And that could be very expedient if they successfully identified the concentrations of contaminants on their first testing and remove them all and don't find further contaminants.
To be continued.
Yeah, so the update that you received, the council did not, is that the dates are now scheduled for the removal of those first two materials. So that was good news to get last week.
But the update that council received, which I need to go watch, led them to, or someone to say that it was moving along briskly. Were they referring to the cleanup or were they referring to the conversations between the owner of the property and the townmakers?
You know, I might defer to our city councillor who's present. I was under the impression that the, the fact, the developer indicated that the cleanup was moving along briskly. And I think that was in reference to the November 20th DEQ determination, which provided this more accelerated path by determining that it was solid, contaminated solid waste as opposed to hazardous material. And so the developer waiting for that trigger to be identified is now moving briskly, developing a land use code, which we've not yet seen in terms of a developer agreement or specific land use code recommendations for changes to the master plan. But they have hired a traffic engineer and done some initial studies. They hired Johnson Economics to do an economic analysis, which is like an economic opportunities analysis, but specific to the, this project and the land uses within that area. So they are making forward progress in terms of getting the research and study done. The next step will be responding to our pre-application in terms of providing specific, specificity in terms of the proposal that can then be submitted for annexation and a master plan review. I don't know if that answers or if councillor had other interpretation of that meaning.
No, that tracks to my understanding. And additionally, I think a question that I asked towards the end of their presentation was about, just a channel of communication seems to be functioning so much better between the property owner, the potential developer, the city. I know Mr. Akins has been huge in helping us navigate this. So compared to three years ago, I do think that things are moving at a much more steady pace rather than fits and spurts and stall.
And they did say that they're working with the property owners contractor so that while some of this cleanup of the site is happening, they can do rough grading based on the development plan at the same time. So they've hired a surveyor to do a topographic survey to incorporate that into the cleanup work. So that should put townmakers that much further along to begin with.
Excellent, okay.
And that's the update on Croman?
Okay, so we'll move on to our next subject, which is open discussion. And did you wanna talk about this?
I was, I thought I'd bring it up here, yeah, just in discussion.
Go for it.
Just, just an administrative item for commission and, you know, I don't want it to sound like it's an overreaction or not, but watching what city council has been having to deal with. We are also a televised meeting. We have a public comments section, which I'm not aware of, has any constraints around it whatsoever as to what could be done in this room, should someone come in here and want to make use of this venue. And what I was looking at, and I talked to Chair Werner about, was if there is no specific call-out as to what public comments would be acceptable or how they would be acceptable, would it behoove us to put something on the record in the form of a resolution or whatever the appropriate instrument is that essentially would say that we don't allow, similar to council, we don't allow banners, we don't allow talking out of turn, we don't allow shouting in the chamber, and that, you know, while Chair can, can pound the gavel and try to stop it, if someone says, this is, this is public comments section, this is my way of publicly commenting, we have something that we can fall back on as a commission to say, no, we've clearly outlined and are on record that this is not allowed. You can speak, you cannot do any of these other things that are disrupting our ability to do our business. That would give the chair authority, which I think she has, but is now clearly specified.
Yeah, so I think, I think she already has the authority as the chair. You know, I think we can, and I don't know that, it, it feels like we're trying to fix a problem that doesn't currently exist, and I'm not sure that, that that's needed. It would be interesting to see if there are normative guidelines that the state has published. I think there's a body of work that, that describes public comment, why it exists, and, and I wonder if there are some, you know, some standards that are part of the state administrative rules or ORSs that already provide some guidance that we could point to if we needed to. I don't know that, I just, it feels like we're trying to fix a problem that I don't see existing right now.
It, it does not exist, it just occurred to me in, in looking at this and in another venue that I deal with, that because we are recorded and televised, that there are individuals that might want to take advantage of that and come into this chamber and make a scene for purposes of publicity or whatever. And what is our ability to then stop that? I frankly don't look to Oregon State to give us guidance. I would say the commission should decide what it wants to do and allow, so long as we don't violate someone's statutory rights to come in here and have a public comments to us on some order of business. But I don't even think public comments requires it to be, I don't know, it doesn't require it to be business on the agenda. It's open, speak about anything.
Yeah, that's the point of it, it's not on the agenda of a forum, isn't it? But on the other hand, I, I guess I assume that I would gavel down whoever was talking out of turn and that normal rules of decorum would, would follow. You go ahead.
Well, I've never, the most dramatic thing I've ever seen in a planning commission meeting was some guy taking his two-year-old and putting him on a table and saying, this is why this street can't be, you know. There's, and not to say that it couldn't happen in the future, but I don't, and I appreciate where you're coming from, but I haven't ever, never seen the, the problem come up.
No, I, my thought process was simply to try and get in front of it. It's nothing big, onerous or otherwise, it's just a, my sense of saying, we're, we're clear about the business that we're doing in this room and the nature of it, and we don't want disruption in this chamber. If the chair pounds the gavel and says, someone, please sit down and stop shouting, then this person says, no.
Then you just have them removed.
By the sergeant-at-arms?
The police are right over there.
Yeah, that's what we would end up doing, is having to walk down the way.
I'm not opposed to doing it, I just don't know that there's.
I mean, if, if commission is, is fine with it, the reason I brought it up is that I wouldn't wanna get caught flat-footed in front of somebody making a big scene in the room and we're debating amongst ourselves as to whether or not we're going to allow it.
So I don't think it, and I don't think it's a, I wanna set the context for this. So when I worked at SOU, we had regular opportunities and occasions where known bad actors would come to campus and provide a level of hate speech. And because it was a regular occurrence and these were known actors, we had policy and procedure and we rehearsed how to take care, how to handle that. Because it was, it was a, something that we had passed history with, it was expected, and so we developed very standardized approaches with how to handle that and coordinated with Ashley PD and we had it all figured out. And, and it occurred regularly enough, unfortunately, and when it did, we dealt with it. And so that's what, that's part of why I led with kind of the adage, if it's not broke, don't fix it. The, I think that the chair's authority to, to provide the appropriate guidance and discipline to a person who's not behaving in a manner that, that she would expect as the chair, I think that's the, that's the overarching principle to me. It's, it's her authority as the chair to provide that discipline. Could we articulate it? Sure. I don't know that we need to. I mean, clearly, we don't have a history of it being a problem.
We run fairly boring meetings here, which, it's, it's, it's the venue as much as anything else that made me bring it up.
Yeah, it's, you know, and I think the, you know, we've got a bunch of smart people in the room. If something happened right now. If something happened right now, I would actually be more concerned with active shooter events or other things, you know, public space. That's lower down on my priority list of, of concern, to be honest. I think if something happened, we would deal with it, we would get support if, if the person was unresponsive to a correction, we would, we would get support, we would call 911, we would help them to the door, we would figure something out. But, so I'm not opposed to it, I just don't see a need, I just don't see a need for it.
If the chairperson just determined that there was hate speech or something that wasn't permissible in this forum, for one, they're only limited to five minutes, correct?
Sometimes three.
They have to fill out the form ahead of time of what they're going to speak about, so maybe you would be turned on to, to some bad actor possibly, but if not, you hit the gavel and you say, you know, that's inappropriate speech in this governing body or this committee, don't do it again, they do it again. The young man behind the door over there is going to cut off the microphone, they can't hear it over there. The, the benefit of seeing it on TV is just seeing it and doesn't become very vocal, it doesn't become one of these viral school board meetings or whatever has been issues. And I think it's mitigated to some extent. Now, I mean, flags and banners and I've, I'm sure.
Yeah, I was, I was at council meeting when the, when the Palestine banner was brought in and saw them unfurl it out in the foyer and then come on in and Mayor handled it, you know, said, you know, we don't do this in this chamber. Bam, 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 pull that up and, and take it out of here. And they complied. So it's, it's fine, you know, I, I, like I said, I bring it up solely to, to try to get ahead of it and, and not have this, this commission in disagreement over something. And my concern is, actually, the topic that might be brought in front of us, probably political, we may hold differing opinions on. And so if we say that we're just not going to allow any of this, then we don't have to even think about it, sitting here as a commission, should this person be able to speak in open discussion on this topic? In this way? Banner clapping.
So it's really an agreement among ourselves that we won't allow stuff that's off-topic or that is politically focused in one direction or another? It's not about having a group of guidelines. It's about internal agreement.
Off-topic can be very broad. I think, you know, housing, you know.
Right, I know, it's all political.
Whatever it is, yeah, it's all political. I, you know, I think there's, yeah, I mean, I think the discussion's great. I think that there needs to be an agreement of, of what we feel going forward. What we want to do as a, as a group and, I mean, hate speech is definitely limited and excluded from, from this, but, you know.
I think the interesting challenge is the, is the differentiation between free speech and hate speech and when it turns the corner. And, and that, and that is not a really, really nuanced conversation. So at, at SOU, we had a general counsel who was really well seasoned, experienced in that legal distinction between free speech and hate speech. And, and then as a campus community, we allowed free speech, which could include banners, which could include very hot topics. And where that turns the corner is where it gets really tough. And I, and I think, you know, the question for us might be whether a, a person feels unsafe or whether the chair feels it's inappropriate either in topic or delivery. So I, those are some of my thoughts.
So just last session, I felt attacked by somebody that was up there talking. I didn't feel personally attacked, but I felt attacked as a member of this group. But I wouldn't say that person shouldn't be allowed to do that. I'd just be offended and that's just my problem. So how do you, and it was, it was verging on hate speech, you know? So it's, it's a tough one. I don't think that we can stop, you know, but you can, you can tell them to turn off.
Yeah.
It is, it is a tough one, and actually, I hadn't really gone to speech so much as action.
Physical action.
Physical action that I was thinking of when I, when I started running this idea through my head, which is the banner, which is the singing, which is the chanting, which is, you know, any number of things that, that could be done within this chamber that stop us from doing the work that we're supposed to do.
I think that's all you have to do is anything that stops us from carrying on with our work, except for whatever that public forum is, which is limited.
Yes.
I don't know, I, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And, and I mean, that's our, that could be the definition of what we're, what we're talking about here, that satisfies what I'm thinking of, you know, as vice chair who gets to step into the role if Lisa's back in Cuba having fun. You know, just being comfortable that we have an agreement across ourselves as to no disruption is going to be allowed and that, well, just thank you very much, please sit down.
The other interesting part of this for me, and I'll use the SOU analogy again, there were topics where we would, that we knew were sensitive to our board of trustees and we would develop in advance evacuation plans, have plans for relocation of the board if, you know, if, if we had actors, whether they're students or, or community members that came in and were disruptive. These were on topics that we knew were hot-button topics, so we had a plan that we would pre-brief the board on and the executives and we, thankfully, in the six years I was there, we never had to implement the plan. But, but the, my point of the story is that there could be, if we saw a topic that we thought in advance, that we thought could be a hot-button topic, it might be then constructive to say, hey, this could be sensitive, what do.
Everybody keep in mind.
What do we think about that, you know? And, you know, that would be, that's really more of a pre, that's a, a planning activity as much, no pun intended, but that's a little bit of pre-planning and risk management, in essence.
Well, and we can, we can certainly do that among ourselves if we see something that's on the agenda that we think might generate some adverse discussion, we can say, heads up, there's something on the agenda, let's all pay attention. But that's not going to get at the public forum.
Open discussion, public forum.
Where somebody comes to the microphone and just starts ranting on any topic, whatever the topic is, has nothing to do with ashland or planning or.
That's what public forum is.
Yeah, right.
So, you know.
I, I do think we, we do need to be tolerant of people who come before us and want to say something. And if, but on the other hand, if we can, if we can determine that it's going toward hate speech or going toward enrolling a banner or something like that, then, then at that point, I think it's our obligation to stop it.
I think it needs to be more organic, stay organic responsiveness.
Oh, oh, as, as opposed to.
Written down.
Written, in place.
I think so.
Well, we can, we can leave it as it is now, and if, if, if we do get challenged, if somebody does come and is obnoxious, we can try, I can try gabbling them down, we can try turning off the microphone, we can try going next door to the police, we can try all those things and then do a debrief afterwards if we don't like what happened. I would say that would be the time to write something down and be more formal about it. Does that work for you?
No, no, it's, it's fine. I wanted to have the discussion just to feel what the temperature was on this commission for the topic. And, and, you know, everybody is, is comfortable. We don't have too many people sitting out here who are clamoring to get to the microphone, I get it. But no, I, I feel comfortable with what we talked about and think that everybody sounds like they're in, you know, similar space on dealing with disruption. Speech, speech, there's got to be more latitude in that period of time, but actual disruption of this room, not tolerated.
Okay.
That's all I can do. Thanks.
Okay, so any other, other business? Any other, other, other open discussion? Any topics anybody wants to talk about?
We might turn off the mic.
We might.
What topic would that be?
I have nothing, sorry. Just irresistible.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Brandon and Derek for all the good information and what you put up there.